Okay, we are live and recording. This is Mrs. Bowlin, College Algebra Review for Exam Four. Being recorded to help students who are not able to make today's study session. And anybody who is attending, if you have questions, it's much easier for me. Also, it's easier probably for anybody watching the videos to please just go ahead and make your mic live and talk to me as I'm going through this. It'll, I think it'll be a little bit better interaction. So Stephanie asked for, "Graph the function," and it's right here. Says make sure to graph the horizontal asymptote. Also state the y-intercept, domain, and range of the functions. So our function right here is f of x is equal to 5x. What we need to look at is this right here. This is our base, and we have to look at the value of the base. And literally, I made the key for your exam yesterday, and as I went through and made the key, because I was making it for other instructors also, is, you know, I process these problems one step at a time, just like I do in class. You know, the first thing I want to do is what's the value of our base? Our base 5 is greater than 1, therefore we know it's an increasing function. It's also an exponent, so it's an exponential. When we have an exponential function, unless there is a horizontal shift or a vertical shift, let's look. Is there a horizontal shift? No. So there's no horizontal shift. There's nothing connected to that x. Are you asking? Aren't you showing it? Let me look at it. Oh, very nice. So no horizontal shift, there's no vertical shift. And I can tell that because there's no plus or minus something on the end here. It would be a horizontal shift if it was connected to the x, okay? It would be a vertical shift if it was connected to the main part of the function. Also, there's no negative in front of the x, so there's, and there's no negative in front of the 5, so there's no reflection. Those are the things that you need to look at to begin with, okay? It's an increasing function, it's an exponential function, which means I know that my one known point is the point (0,1), and it's increasing, so it's going to go, whoops, it's going to go like this. Okay? How steep this curve is, whether it goes straight up like that, or whether it comes out like this, depends on your base, okay? It's really depending upon your base. And then it also asks us to identify our horizontal asymptote. When you have a exponential function, your horizontal asymptote, parent function starts at the x-axis, but it will shift accordingly if there is a vertical, a vertical shift, that it will shift up or down accordingly. Okay? So Stephanie, how's that so far on that particular problem? Oh, it also-
That's so good, that makes sense.
Okay, so the y-intercept is our one-known point, the (0,1). The domain is going to be all real numbers. We can plug in any numbers for x, that's going to be our domain, and then our range is going to be only positive numbers, okay? So our y-intercept, y-intercept is our one-known point, which is the (0,1). Our asymptote is at y equals 0, because y always equals 0 on all of these points. And then, let's see, our horizontal asymptote, y, domain, our domain is all real numbers, and our range is all positive real numbers. Okay, so where do you want me to head to next, Stephanie?
Can you do the next problem? I had problems figuring out how to find the y-intercept.
Okey-dokey.
Because, yeah.
Okay, so, this one right here says, "We graph the function, f of x is equal to 2 to the negative, x to the negative 1 plus 2. Make sure to graph the horizontal asymptote. Also state the y-intercept, domain, and range." Okay, so our function is, f of x is equal to 2 to the x minus 1 plus 2. Okay, first thing I want to do is look at the base. So look at base, okay? My base is this number 2 here, okay? So my base, let me do it like this. I circle the word "base" so you know which 2 I'm looking at. So that's my base right there, okay? Because 2 is greater than 1, increasing. Step 2, let's look for a horizontal shift. There is one, it's right there. Do you see that? There's a horizontal shift. It says negative 1, which means we're going to go to the right 1 unit, because x always lies to you. So a positive horizontal shift right, not 2 units, how about 1 unit? 1 unit, okay? Because it's x minus 1 equals 0, therefore x equals positive 1. So it's a positive shift to the right. Then we have a vertical shift. So let me, I don't like the placement of that, so hang tight. I need to get that down further, because that's going to line up with the other thing. There we go. So now we're going to come down here, 3. We have a vertical shift up 2 units. I know it's up, because it's a positive 2. Next, I need to look for reflection. Number 4, no reflection. And I know there's no reflection, because my x right there is not negative, and my 2 right here is not negative, okay? If it was, then I would know I have a reflection. Okay, so let's first shift our one-known point. So our one-known point starts right here at the (0,1). So at the (0,1), I'm going to have a positive horizontal shift right 1 unit. That takes me to that point right there. And then it says I have a vertical shift up 2 units, and I'm going to go up 1, 2. And that is where my point is going to be at. So I went from the (0,1) to the (1,3), and that is my one-known point, okay? Now, the next thing I need to do is I also want to plot my vertical, I'm sorry, my horizontal asymptote. So originally, it was the x-axis. Well, it's going to go up however many units my vertical shift is. So I had a vertical shift up 2 units. I'm going to change the color of my mouse, I've got too much purple going on here. There we go. I think that'll be a little bit easier. So I have a vertical shift up 2 units. So I know that I'm normally right here, so now I'm going to go up 1, 2 units. So right there is where my horizontal asymptote is shifting to. And I always make that a dotted line to the best of my ability. So that's my horizontal asymptote. So step 5, my horizontal asymptote is at y equals 2. All of these points, y always equals 2. So x equals 0, y equals 2. x equals 1, y equals 2. x equals 2, y equals 2. x equals 3, y equals 2. So I define that line by saying y always equals 2. I have an increasing function, so I know that my function is going to go like this, okay? But I've been asked to identify my y-intercept. So to solve for my y-intercept, I'm going to do that up here. I'm going to shift up a little bit. The notes aren't quite, I write so much and write so much information now, sometimes the notes aren't quite able to handle all my writing, so. So if I'm going to find the y-intercept, this means that if I'm on the y-intercept right here, is it my x or my y that must equal 0? Stephanie and Mike can tell me, is it x or y that must equal 0 if I'm on a y-intercept?
x must equal 0.
That's right. So that means x equals 0. So now I'm going to go f of x, which means is equal to 0, and that's going to be equal to 2 to the 0 minus 1 plus 2. And I did not quite allow myself enough room to solve all of this, but that's okay. We're just going to draw an arrow up over here. Okay, so, there we go, we'll shift. 2 to the negative 1, so f of 0 is going to equal 2 to the negative 1 plus 2. Well, 2 to the negative 1 is equal to, you just rewrite it, that is 1/2 plus 2. So f of 0 is equal to 2 and 1/2. 2 and 1/2, so my y-intercept is the (0,2.5). Okay, so now I'm going to come in here, and I can plot that one-known point, and I can go like, if I can, I might be able to draw that, there we go. And that would be a sketch of my graph. How's that so far, Stephanie?
That's really helpful, thank you.
You are welcome. Where do you want me to head to next?
Either 10 or 11.
Okay, let's head on over there. Okay, so number 10, it's very, very similar to what we've been doing, except for it's the inverse function, okay? So let's come on in here, let me grab some different ink. So we have the log base 3 of x minus 2. Step 1, identify your base, okay? My base, my base is 3, which is greater than 0. This tells me I have an increasing function, so therefore, increasing. Okay? I know I have an increasing function. My parent function, okay, no, I don't really like this. I wish we would be able to draw our own scales or something. You've got to notice that this is 2, 4, 6. So the 1 is right there. So our parent function on an increasing function looks like this for the logarithm, okay? Where your axis right here is your vertical asymptote, okay? So that's the parent function. I'm going to take that back out of there. But you've got to notice that on this scale, and I don't remember if there's a scale like that on your exam, I don't, pay attention to the scales on the exam. I don't remember one way or the other, if there's a situation like this on the exam or not. So, so we have an increasing function. Normally, our point is right there. So next, we want to look for a horizontal shift. And I do, I have a horizontal shift, because it's connected to that x. So I have a horizontal shift, horizontal shift. And it's a horizontal shift, and I have x minus 2 equals 0. So I add 2 to both sides, and I get x is equal to 2. So I have a horizontal shift, positive 2 units. So I normally start right here at 1, and I'm going to go 2 units to the right, so that's 1, 2. So right here is going to be my new one-known point. This also means that, well, let me finish, I'm sorry, let me do one other step before I draw those conclusions. So step 3, I'm going to look for a vertical shift. Is there any vertical shift? No, there's not. So there is no vertical shift, okay? So then the next thing I want to look at is my asymptote. My asymptote is going to be vertical, and it normally is the y-axis, and it's going to have a shift to the right, as many shifts, in whatever direction your horizontal shift is, and the same number of units. So I had a horizontal shift to the right 2 units, so it's going to go 1, 2. So actually, it's going to be right here is our vertical asymptote. And so in this case, it's x is equal to 2. So this point right here is (2,0). This point right here is (2,2). This point right here is (2,4). This point right here is (2,6). Okay, so x always equals 2, so the asymptote is x equals 2. Let's see, our graph, the verticals, also state the x-intercept. So we've got to find the x-intercept in this case. So with number, with this one here, it would be that our f of x is going to have to equal 0, so we're going to have log base 3 of x minus 2 is equal to 0. Well, the first thing that I think of is let's make that an exponent, okay? So then I have, this is 3 to the 0 is equal to x minus, whoops, not 1, but 2, okay? And 3 to the 0 is just the number 1, so this is the same thing as 1 is equal to x minus 2. Now let's solve for x, I will, whoops, did somebody have a question here? If you have a question, just unmike. Okay, it looks like not the case, okay. Let me see who else is attending class. Good job, we've got 5 students, excellent. Alrighty, back to work. Okay, so solving for x, I would add 2 to both sides, and then I get therefore, x equals 3. So therefore, x equals 3, which we already knew, right? Because we didn't have a horizontal shift, I'm sorry, we didn't have a vertical shift, rather. So we already knew that, but we just let the math prove that. So that my x-intercept is the point (3,0). So we did the math to show you, so maybe on your exam, you have a horizontal shift, so your math might show, you know, be a little different. Okay, so it says domain, our domain, our domain is going to be any numbers greater than 2. I can't put in an x equals 0, it's not going to work. I can't put in x equals negative 4, it's not going to work. I can't even put in x equals 2, it has to be greater than 2. So our domain is going to be parentheses, 2 to infinity. Our range is going to be all real numbers. So negative infinity, positive infinity, I so much prefer just writing all real numbers. Okay, so Stephanie, how's that? Are you, are you getting it?
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. It's making sense, yeah.
Good. You want to help me with number 11 here?
Sure.
Okay, so looking at your notes, what's step 1? Let me switch inks here. What's step 1?
The first thing I did was took a look at the base, and which was 2, so it's increasing.
Okay, now we know it's increasing. What's the next thing I want to do?
I looked at the shift, there's a horizontal shift, 1 unit to the left.
Shift, there we go. 1 unit left, correct?
And there's a vertical shift, 2 units up.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do our shifting here. We know that our one-known point occurs at the (1,0). We're going to shift it 1 unit left, which is going to put me right here at the origin. Whoops, didn't pick my pen up quite right, there we go. And then I'm going to shift 2 units up, so that's going to put my one-known point right here. Because it's increasing, I know that it's going to be looking like this, and I need to identify next, really, my horizontal asymptote. So where's that going to be at? I'm sorry, vertical, vertical asymptote.
I was going to say, so it would be 1 over from the y-axis, right? So it'd be negative, so x equals negative 1.
You got it. So x equals negative 1, and I'll go ahead and fill this in. It's going to look like that kind of sorta, it's kind of the gist of it. And then it states, it says state the x-intercept. So how do you want to do the x-intercept?
What I did was I plugged in 0 for y, and I solved for x, just straight across. So 0 is equal to log base 2, x plus 1 plus 2.
So we did log, it sounds exactly like what I would do, so log of x plus 1 equal, whoops, not plus 2, sorry. Plus 2 equals 0, we're going to subtract 2 from both sides, and we're going to get log base 2 of x plus 1 is equal to negative 2. Did you then put it into an exponential form?
Yeah.
Very good. So you should have gotten 2 to the negative 2 is equal to x plus 1, and 2 to the negative 2 is going to be 1/4th. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
Plus 1, we subtract 1 from both sides, and we get therefore, x is equal to, negative 3/4?
Uh-huh.
Okay, very good. So our x-intercept is the point negative 3/4, 0. And I guess if I could have worked on that a little bit better, I could have drawn that a little bit better, but there you go. And then we have to do our domain and our range. So what is our domain? Our domain is a little different on this one, so let's make sure we write that one down. Domain, what's the domain?
Negative 1 to infinity.
Correct. Parentheses or brackets?
Parentheses.
Excellent. And our range?
All real numbers.
You got it. Are you doing a little bit better on this concept?
Yeah, it's a lot clearer, thank you.
Good, you are more than welcome. Did you have another question of where we needed to head to?
No, I'm all good.
Okay, so let me open it up to other students, and if they don't have any other questions, I'll go find some more problems like this. I'll find more problems like this in a minute anyway, but I want to just have a, check in with other students real quick. How's everybody else doing this morning? Stephanie and I were enjoying our breakfast when we first got on this morning. Has everybody else eaten breakfast? A cup of tea here that I'm going to start sipping on. Is anybody else listening? Everybody else got their sound turned off? Ah, hello, Isamar, good morning. Do you have any questions directly at this time, Isamar? Okay, I'm going to go in. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Could you go over 19 and 18?
Sure. Who am I speaking with?
Hannah.
Hannah, you said?
Yes.
Thank you. So let me come in here, you said 18 and 19. I'm headed there now. So this says solve for x. I need one of those. Oh, I sure do, my, my, my. So, huh, that's like really awesome. I don't know how often you all, my children just went and cleaned their bedroom, and they brought out 3 TI-30s for me, plus I had my other one sitting here. So now I have 4 TI-30s. I'm like, yeah, this is great, give me a calculator. Whoops, I don't know what makes that keep coming up, but it does. Okay, here we go. So solving for x. So I have, let me get a different ink. I have 1 plus log 3, 2x plus 1 is equal to 2. I'm going to bring this 1 over to begin with, and so I have log base 3 of 2x plus 1 is equal to 1. So Hannah, when you see it in this form, the next thing you want to do is convert it to an exponential, okay? So when you have log, some expression is equal to a number, that's the objective. When you get it to that, now take and turn it into an exponential. So when I turn it into an exponential, what do I turn it into? Can you tell me that?
Is it 2x plus, I don't know.
Okay, remember, this is when we go counterclockwise. We start at the base, and we go here, and then we go there. And so what we end up with is 3 to the first power, 3 to the first power is equal to this right here, which is 2x plus 1. And I'm not trying to frighten you, okay? But I am going to tell you point-blank, you will not pass tomorrow's exam if you do not know that one rule. You have to be, you have to be very proficient. So if you have log base a of x equals y, okay, going back and forth, that's a to the y equals x. You have to be very, very good with that by tomorrow, or you're just not going to pass the exam.
My exam review, I just wasn't sure if it was right.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I had it written, I had that written down on my exam review, I just wasn't sure if I had done it right.
Good, you did. And, and, and so today's going to be about building your math muscles, so you're more confident for tomorrow, because that's, because that's, that's the one thing, you have to be able to just be confident on attacking these problems tomorrow, and very, very confident. But this, this concept is a direct, I mean, one of the, it's a direct question concept, but it's a direct application, I would say, at least on 50% of the problems, okay? Something similar to that. So you really, really need to know that. Okay, so 3 to the first power is just 3, and that is equal to 2x plus 1, subtract 1 from both sides, and I get 2 is equal to 2x, divide both sides through by 2, and I get therefore, x is equal to 1. So now I just solve for x. I can always go back in and check my work, and people will say, really, even on this? I'm sure you can. So we can do a check, and remember, you're going to have plenty of time on this exam tomorrow. You are going to have plenty of time. Go back and check every single problem, please, go back and check. So we see that I have 1 plus log base 3 of 2 times 1 plus 1 is supposed to equal 2. So let's rewrite this. I can bring my 1 over, so this is going to be log base 3 of 2 times 1 is 2, 2 plus 1 is 3, is equal to, now I'm going to bring that 1 over, so that becomes 1. So if I rewrote this as an exponential, it would be 3 to the first power equals 3, and that's a very true statement. It would be 3 to the first power equals 3. This 3 to the first power equals this 3. And is that true?
True, yes.
Yeah, so we know we solved it correctly. So everybody, please make sure you take the time to check your work, and show me that you checked your work on your paper, because I go through, right now, I'm going through my stats class, and on average, it's taking me 8 minutes to grade an exam. Because I'm looking at their, they have 50, their exam was 53 questions, because of all the parts that you have to build into it. It was really just like an 11-question test, but because you have to put so many, there's so many steps in statistics, I had to itemize each step as a question, so it ended up being 53 questions. But I have to go back and forth and look at their work, if they submit work. I, my heart breaks for the students, there's- There's, there's probably about 20% of my students that chose not to submit their work. And I could tell from their exam and grading that chances are they understood the concept, and chances are I could've guessed what mistake they made, but because they didn't give me their work, I can't give them partial credit. I can't just assume that they knew what they were doing. They have to give me some work so I can look. So please, write things down, uh, so that I can look at your work. Alrighty, so number 19 was next on the question list. So here we go. So number 19, I'm just gonna kinda go like that. Alrighty, so this one here, the first thing you're gonna wanna do is combine those two right there. You see that plus sign? That means this and this are factors. So I can rewrite this as log of x times x plus 3 is equal to 1. What's my base, Hannah?
Um, is it the x times x plus 3?
No, no. My base is the number that goes right down there, right?
Would you change it to 10?
If it's not written down, by default, it's 10, okay? So if it's not written down, by default, it's 10. If it's L-O-G, okay? So if L-O-G, okay, and there's nothing written there, then base 10, okay? If L-N, okay? Then base e. Because L-N is the same thing as log base e, okay? So if we don't have anything written down here, it's 10. If we have L-N, then we know we have log base e. So on this one right here, what's my base?
10.
Right, it's not written there, but it's there. Now, does this problem look just like 18 in a way?
Right, yeah.
Do you see that now? So now that we've wrote the base in, it makes it a little bit easier to see, and now we can take and rewrite it as an exponent. So when we do that, we get 10 to the first power is equal to x times x plus 3. And that means that this is just 10, is equal to x squared plus 3x. Now I can bring my 10 over to the right-hand side. So when I do that, I would just subtract 10 from both sides, and that's going to give me x squared plus 3x minus 10. Because I had to subtract that 10 to get it over here, so it's a minus. Now, uh, there's one of two things. If you can look at it right away and see that it factors, do it. If you're not sure, don't force it into factoring. Go ahead and do the quadratic formula. That's my recommendation. That's assuming that you have the quadratic formula memorized properly. This one does factor. I think it does anyway. My guess is that it factors. So I'm gonna put an x in an x. My factors of 10 are gonna be 2 and 5, whoops. I'm gonna have opposite signs because my 10 is negative, my 3 is positive. It tells me my larger factor is positive. So now I have, um, my factors as x minus 2, x plus 5. I'm gonna set each factor equal to 0. x minus 2 equals 0. x plus 5 equals 0. Therefore, x equals 2. Therefore, x equals negative 5. Now I must compare these to my domains. And actually, I should've done that back up here, but since I did my check, I was okay. I did a check and it worked out, so I was okay. But when you end up particularly, a clue is, is when you have two solutions, always check your domain. You should always check your domain, no matter what. But always, 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 always check your domain if you have two solutions, okay? So now, uh, so I've, I've solved for that, but step two is going to be, uh, check domain. And again, I, I, they don't give me enough room to write everything that I need to write. So I'm gonna say x has to be greater than 0, and I'm gonna say 3x, 3 plus x, or x plus 3, excuse me, has to be greater than 0. So it's x has to be greater than 0, and then x plus 3 has to be greater than 0. So this one here becomes x has to be greater than negative 3. So my domain states that, uh, and this right here is a negative 5. I don't know if my negative got dropped or not. Uh, my domain is going to be the more restrictive, which is going to be x has to be greater than 0. Hold on a second, guys. Hey, Bill? Tim? Oh, everybody says, Mom's working, we've left the house. Okay, so, um, so check the domain, and that's going to be, uh, 0 to positive infinity. Guys, hang tight a second. My computer's getting hot, and I need to go to the other room to get a cord to connect it to its cooling fan. So I'll be right back. I'm so sorry, hold on. Actually, I didn't have to go as far as I thought I was gonna have to go. I didn't have to go to the living room. I have taken over the dining room table. Oh, yeah, I do, 'cause neither one of those works. Shoot. Okay, hold on. I gotta go back out again. Hold on. Well, I'm just gonna have to wait till somebody comes back in the house and can find me a cord, because I don't know where they're at. Alrighty, so what's our solution, Hannah, on this one?
Um, x equals 2 and x equals negative 5.
Nope. Um, what's our domain?
Oh, 0 and infinity.
Is both of those potential solutions in the domain?
Yes.
No.
No, they're not, so we don't have them.
Yeah, negative 5 is not in the domain. So therefore, the only solution, whoops, is x equals 2. That right there is the only solution, okay? x minus 5 is not in the domain, and you need to make sure that you're all paying attention to that for tomorrow. Just trust me on that. You've got to make sure you check, okay?
Okay.
Okay, do you have any other questions right now?
Um, I, oh, actually, could you go over 21?
Mm-hmm. Sure, absolutely. Let's see here. Okay, because fruit flies multiply very quickly, they are often used in the studies of genetics. The functions, q t is equal to 100e times e raised to the point 05776t gives the population of fruit flies in a given area. And the initial population was 100 fruit flies, where t is in time of days. Find the number of days until the population reaches 2,000, uh, fruit flies. So t is in days, not years, which is kind of our normal thing. And so, um, our equation is, um, I would say this is q t, like, be quiet. Although some other people might hear it as, and cutie, cutie pie, who knows? Anyway, it's a q t. And our initial population is 100. When it says that right there, that's just confirming that number right there, because remember that the initial population is what's called Y0, and that equals 100, and that is in the form right there, and so that works there. Okay, this is for the number of days the population reaches 2,000. So t is a function of time, and time is days. So all you have to do in this case is go 2,000 is equal to 100e to the 0.05776t. Our objective is to fi, solve for t when we know this whole expression would be equal to 2,000. So we set it equal to that 2,000. Now we have to solve for t, so we're gonna divide, whoops, both sides through by 100. Now, in the lecture video series that I did, I state, don't change this number in, by reducing it in the fraction, okay? However, if it is a, if it, uh, is a perfect division like it is right now, then you can go ahead and do that. But if it, if you have decimals that don't truncate, then do not reduce it, just leave it in fraction form. This is, this one right here is, is like the one time that you have your exception, because that'll go away, and that'll go away. So that really reduces down to 20. So that would equal to 20, okay? Um, the next thing you wanna know then is that we wanna take the natural log of both sides, okay? So step 1, I should've put down here, step 1 is to get e, um, with no coefficient. Okay, that's why I divided it through by 100 to begin with, is I was getting e with no coefficient. So really what I have right now is I have 20 is equal to e to the 0.05776t. Now e doesn't have a coefficient. Step 2 is going to be take the natural log of both sides. Take the natural log of both sides. Are you all surprised that I've run out of room again? Okay. So when I take the natural log of both sides, it's gonna look like this. I'm gonna have the natural log of 20 is equal to, whoops, the natural log of e to the 0.05776t, okay? So that's what we're gonna end up with. Now, uh, I've gone over this in the videos a lot, and then what else did I do? Been doing this a lot, so we can, oh, I know what I was doing, never mind. Okay, um, so you have to remember to, when you take the natural log like this, that, uh, so we're just gonna kinda take this right here and move it down here. We're gonna say, the natural log of e to the 0.05776t, okay? Is going to be equal to, apply the power rule. This is going to be 0.05776t multiplied by the natural log of e. Remember that, Zachary, would you do me a huge favor, honey? I cannot find the power cord that connects my, my fan to the computer, and my computer's awfully hot. These don't do it. I found this one, I found this one, but they are not the right ones.
It's a USB to USB.
Yeah, but I couldn't find it, so, thank you. Okay, so now, taking this part right here, if I take the natural log of e, I can rewrite that as log base e of e. Do you agree?
Right.
Okay, and then I could say, I'm just gonna let that equal x. And once I let it equal x, now I can solve for x. And I can solve for x by rewriting this as an exponent. I can go like this to that. Thank you, Zachary, very much. So I get e to the x is equal to e. So if I have that statement, Hannah, what must x equal?
1.
Exactly. So therefore, x equals 1. If x equals 1, whoops, I don't have any more paper. Hold on, let me get, let me create some more paper here. There we go. That should be enough paper. So if x equals 1, if x equals 1 and x equals log base e of e, which equals the natural log of e, this means that, uh, 1 must equal the natural log of e. Okay, so let me show you that again. We solve that x has to equal 1. So x equals 1. So we already know from up here that x is equal to log base e of x, log base e of x, x equals that, and this equals natural log of e, and that equals natural log of e. And if x equals 1, and x also equals the natural log of e, that means the natural log of e must equal 1. Are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. So that's the long way around that. A lot of people just memorize that the natural log of e is equal to 1, and, you know, and that's, that works too. Uh, so, coming back full circle, I have my 20 over here, so I have, uh, coming over here, we're just gonna say we're not solving this right now. Uh, so we're gonna have 20, okay, that's, uh, 'cause I took, it's actually the natural log of 20, actually. The natural log of 20 is equal to, uh, this right here, okay? So it's gonna be equal to 0.05776t times the natural log of e, which is just multiplied by 1. So now I can just solve for t. What I do to one side, I do to the other side. And therefore, t is equal to the natural log of 20 divided by 0.05776. And you're gonna get at your calculator, you're gonna punch in your calculator, and what did you get?
I'm doing it right now, sorry.
I am too, so, no apology necessary. Exactly. So that is 51.865. Therefore, t is going to be equal to 52 days. So it's gonna take 52 days, you're gonna round up for that, uh, fly population to equal 2,000 flies.
Okay.
That's, that's the, the long and short of that answer. Are we good with that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, are you confident that you could solve that one on your own?
Yes, I'm gonna go back and try it, um, try it again later, too.
I'm glad to hear that. I'm glad to hear that. Everybody else, I would ro, strongly recommend you do the same thing. Okay, next question, I'm gonna come over to wherever we're at, um, in the meeting. Anybody else have any specific questions? If not, I'm just gonna open up, uh, the supplementary exercises that I sent out. Good morning. Mike is not cooperating, unfortunately. Are you willing to post this video? Because I'm unable to view it, and I've been following on the auto. So yes, I've, I plan on posting it, Dylan. I had a, another student who has to work this morning that normally would be here if this was a Tuesday or Thursday session. And so, um, yes, I can. And so, uh, anyway, so yes, I will be posting this video. Let's see here, problem 20, okay. Oh, they only give me a little bit of space to solve it in. Let's see what I can do about that. I'll get a thinner ink and write a little smaller. So, here we go. I'm gonna grab a very thin ink and hope that this works. Actually, let me do a highlighter first, so that I can say that all of that is over there. Okay, so I have log of x plus 12 minus log of x is equal to log of x plus 9. Isamar, can you talk to me?
I'm here.
Great, good morning. What's the first thing that you would wanna do, or that you're thinking about doing on this problem?
Um, I would put the first part into a fraction.
Spot on. Very good. Because of that negative sign right there, you're gonna combine them, and it's gonna be through division. So we're gonna rewrite this as log of x plus 12 divided by x is equal to log of x plus 9. Now, there's a property right here, when you see it in this form, that I'm hoping you recognize. What would you do next?
Um, I would make the base by default the 10.
Right, and what would that do for you? It already is, it already is 10. It already is, it already is ten. And what would you do?
It would, um, wait, yeah, then I would divide both sides or multiply both sides by x.
Nope, nope. Once you have it in this form right here, here's what's important to, for you to recognize. You have a log of something with the same base over here. You have the log. Exactly. Because this, because you have the exact same base. This is no different than if you had something like two to the three x is equal to two to the six, okay? Then you could set, because you have the same base, you can just set the exponents to equal and solve, right?
Yes.
It's the exact same thing, except for instead of being exponents, it's logs. We have, right here, we have log base ten, log base ten. Because we're taking a log of the same ba, base of both sides, what we're taking the log of now equals each other. So now I can say that I have x plus twelve divided by x is equal to x plus nine. Very important that you're able to recognize that. Now I would multiply both sides through by x to take and get rid of that. What I do to one side, I do to the other. Now I just have to figure out where I'm going to after this. So we're going to take and I'm going to draw all the way down here, all the way down. All the way down to here, okay? So, and I have, um, x plus twelve over x. X plus twelve over x is equal to, is it x plus nine? X plus nine, yeah. X, oops, x plus nine. So we're going to multiply both sides through by x to get rid of the x in the denominator. And so that crosses off and I end up with x plus twelve is equal to, go ahead and distribute that, x squared plus nine x. So far, so good?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to subtract, thank you, uh, x from both sides and twelve from both sides. We're just going to move that over. Minus x minus twelve, draw our equal sign, now we're adding straight down. So we get zero, the left-hand side is equal to x squared plus eight x minus twelve. And as I said earlier, I don't know if you were here, on the exam, I encourage you to look and if you can factor and you know you can factor fairly quickly, go ahead and factor it. If you can't, uh, and you're not confident whether it factors or not, then I would go ahead and use the, um, quadratic formula, assuming that you accurately have the quadratic formula memorized, okay? This one here, I'm going to say probably factors, based on my experience. I haven't done it, but I'm just going to start off and I have a negative there, so I have opposite signs right here. I can do two and six. Um, two and six would work, uh, if I was, let's see here, doing, uh, same signs, but I'm not doing same signs. Uh, three and four. Do I have to do the quadratic on this one? Has anybody solved this one?
I have, I, I have used the quadratic formula, but then I kind of got confused once I started getting into that.
Yeah, I think, I think we're going to have to do the quadratic because of the signs right here. Uh, because our factors are two, so if we list our factors of twelve, we have one and twelve. Well, there's no way to add or subtract those to get eight. And then we're going to have two and six, three and four. Two and six would add to eight, but with opposite signs. See, I have, I have opposite signs here. Uh, I cannot get eight and these do not go to, to eight. So we're going to have to do the quadratic on this one. Which is why I said, you know, uh, on the exam, if, um, you're not confident, real quick, I mean, if you don't know for a fact, and that's kind of more of a time management thing, go ahead and do the quadratic formula. So have that memorized. X is equal to minus b plus or minus the square root of b squared minus four ac, all divided by two a. So my a is equal to one, my b is equal to eight, my c is equal to negative twelve. So I have, x is going to be equal to negative b, which is eight, plus or minus the square root of, um, well, let me just go and substitute it in. Eight squared minus four times one times negative twelve all over two times one. Now, start reducing it. So I have, x is equal to negative eight plus and minus square root. Was I behind, was I lagging?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, sometimes that happens with WebEx more so than with everything else. Um, so twelve times, uh, four is going to be forty-eight and divided by two. And this is going to be negative eight plus or minus the square root of, I'm going to get my calculator out to see what do I end up with. Sixty-four plus forty-eight is one hundred twelve. Divided by two. And so, I'm going to see if that's divisible by four. It is divisible by four. And more importantly, it almost looks like it might be divisible by sixteen. It is divisible by sixteen. So, that means I have this. I have negative eight plus or minus the square root of, um, six, oops, sixteen times seven divided by two. That's a multiplied right there, okay? The square, this is then equal to, I'm just throwing in extra steps because I know there's going to be people watching this video that if I, that might need these, these extra steps. So it's the square root of sixteen times the square root of seven divided by two. So this is x is equal to negative eight plus or minus. The square root of sixteen is four, so it's going to be four square root of seven divided by two. Two's a common factor of four, two's a common factor of eight, so I can reduce. Two will go into eight four times, this becomes negative four plus or minus. Uh, two will go into four, two times square root of seven. So my final answer looks like this. Um, is it, am I talking to Hannah or Izamar?
Izamar.
Thank you, sorry, I couldn't remember. Um, let me add some paper, because I have managed to run out of paper, because I like to use paper, what can I say? I like to support our local tree farmers. Okay, here we go. Alrighty. Okay, so I have x. Therefore, x is equal to negative four plus or minus two on the square root of seven, which is the same thing as saying I have negative four minus two on the square root of seven and negative four plus two on the square root of seven, which can be converted then to digital, okay? So let's convert both of those to decimal, not digital. Um, so it's going to be negative four minus. And let me, I'm going to start with my square root of seven times two. So seven square root times two equals. And then I'm going to change the sign, because I'm subtracting it, and then I'm going to go plus four, make that a negative, and I get negative nine point two nine one five. And then the other one is going to be seven square root, um, times two plus four negative, which is equal to one point two nine one five. And now I'm going to come back up and compare this to my domain. I have two answers. Whoa, sorry about that, guys, didn't know you had to do that. And I'm going to come back up to the original problem and look at the domain. Which problem was that, right here? Okay, so I have to say to calculate the domain, that x plus, uh, twelve has to be greater than zero, x has to be greater than zero, and then x plus nine has to be greater than zero. So I have to write all that down to calculate my domain. So my domain is, uh, twelve, zero, and nine. So let me do that real quick. So my domain is going to be figured on. X plus twelve has to be greater than zero. X has to be greater than zero and x plus nine has to be greater than zero. Somebody double check that to make sure I had those correct. So therefore, x has to be greater than negative twelve. Therefore, x has to be greater than zero. Therefore, x has to be greater than negative nine. The most restrictive one is this one right here. So that's going to be my domain, which says that, oops, I think I grabbed the wrong one, there we go. Which says that my domain therefore is going to be from zero to positive infinity. Uh, well, I don't want to say or, all real numbers, because it's not. Um, so therefore, therefore, x is equal to positive one point two nine one five is my only solution right here. Because this one right here is not in the domain. So Izamar, are you good with that?
Yes, I am.
Very good, okay. Um, alrighty, guys, what's your next question? Will you guys come up with that? I'm going to bring one dog in and put another dog out, so hang tight, guys. Okay, guys, let me just send my husband a quick text. Oh, I found the mysterious dog that disappeared. Hold on, guys, can you all still hear me? I hope so. Okay, I'll be right back, hold on. Hold on, Miss Pearl. Okay, guys, I apologize for that, but thank you for, uh, letting me take care of what needed to be done, since my family deserted me. Okay, problem twenty, we did that, okay? So, um, any other questions off of this? If not, I'll go open up the supplementary exercises and we're just going to start working, uh, other exercises.
Hey, Ms. Bullen.
Hi.
Um, this is Hannah again. I have to go to work, but I just wanted to ask a quick question about the exam tomorrow.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, how long will we have to finish it?
I don't remember. I'm sorry, Hannah, I, I don't, I don't remember. Uh, it, I think it's normal class period. I think it's a hundred and fifteen minutes, or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, seventy-five minutes. Uh, plus, um, I, I typically, what I'll do, because it's going to be given during class time. And so, uh, I probably, I typically add on like ten minutes before class and five minutes after class. So if you have a seventy-five minute class, um, what, what I'll do, what I do is I open it up ten minutes early, is actually what I do, for you to get through the lockdown browser. And then, you may get through all of the lockdown browser stuff and just have to wait for the test to open up, if that makes sense. You see what I'm saying? So the test, the test window, um, you, you know, you may, I don't think it opens up until, uh, eleven o'clock exactly, the actual test. But I open it up like at ten fifty for you to start going through the procedure of the lockdown browser. That way you can get through, uh, that and be ready to start right at eleven o'clock.
Gotcha.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You are more than welcome and just send me a text if you have questions, uh, throughout the day or whatever. I'll be a little bit slow getting back, because after you guys, I, I also do private tutoring and I have, uh, appointments from eleven o'clock to four o'clock. And I, I literally, I don't have, I, I sometimes, I might get five minutes between appointments, sometimes. And, uh, so yeah, it's, it's a long day for me. Um, but, uh, I'm not complaining, it's money, so hey. We all need a buck. Um, so, uh, but it's a long day, so I may be slow till about four o'clock getting back to you. How many questions are on the test? I don't remember. I want to say thirteen, but I don't, let's see, do I have the key? I might have the key somewhere around, hold on, because I made it yesterday, hold on. Do I have that here? That's stats key, hold on. That's stats. Let's see here. I have it printed out. Let me count real quick. Zachary, can you make sure you're a little bit more accessible or that somebody is? Because I just had to take care of the dogs and, which is a huge inconvenience right now, okay? Thank you. So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen. Thirteen questions are on the exam. So, okay. Let's head on over and look at some supplementary exercises here. I'm not sure where I, I don't know if I saved them over here or not, let me, let me resume. Um, I don't think you can see everything on one page right here. Let me go like this. Okay, so I have one, two, three, four, five equations. Um, let's see here. I have five equations there. I thought they were of, maybe we just have an extra graph here. So let's, uh, look at number six here. It says six here is a cubic. Um, so maybe we don't have a cubic here. So this is x equals negative three, so if x always equals negative three, that's a vertical line, so that is c right here. So number seven is c, we'll write that down. Want everybody to try, I'm going to actually just give you guys about ninety seconds to look at this and see if you can match the graph. So like number seven right here is c, and I can just put a seven right there. So you guys see if you can identify which equations go with each graph on here. Just to kind of warm up and, and practice, because I, there's a couple of problems on the exam that are just like this. And somebody has a live mic, I'm not sure who it is. You can, or you can, I just wanted to let you know that, that you're live. And so if you want to mute, that's fine. If you don't want to mute, that's fine too, just be aware that you're live, that's all. Do you know how to mute?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You don't have to, I just, I did, I wasn't sure if you knew how. Okay, so equation eight. Okay, so equation eight, which graph would be equation eight? I look at equation eight, and, uh, this is a great question. I love this question, because, uh, this is e to the x for equation eight. E is equal to two point, let's see, what does e equal to? Um, two point seven one, two point seven one, which is greater than one. Therefore, it's an increasing graph. Okay? So, uh, if this is an increasing graph, then we have, uh, an ex, it's exponential, okay? So we know it's gonna be looking like this. And then, we have a shift on the hori, or I'm sorry, the vertical shift, down four units. So I'm looking for a sh, a, a graph that's like this, that the one known point goes down four units. So, um, it looks like it would be this one here, so we'd start there, we'd go one, two, three, four. And that's an increasing graph, it's missing the asymptote, we could draw that in. And so I would say that equation eight is i. So i, and then eight. Now let's look at number nine. Number nine is a quadratic, so we know we're gonna have a parabola. And we have a shift to the right three units and up two, so it looks like this one here. Shift to the right three units, up two units. So number nine is d. This is great review for the final exam. And then we have our last one right here, which is, uh, a simple straight line, which we could rewrite as y is equal to three x pl, or minus six. So we'd have a straight line with a y intercept of negative six. And I don't see that graph on here, so I'm gonna say that that one's not here, right now, I just don't see that one. Okay, so those are the ones that we could identify, that we, we have, there must be another page of, of graphs that I did not copy in. So let's go in here and add in more paper, and we're gonna add in some more problems to practice. Let's look at page one. And, let's see here. Oh, this was a couple of pages I must've inserted. Okay, well, let's figure out what we wanna do here that's beneficial. Okay, so we look at this one right here, and says, uh, says it exercises A, F, uh, five through ten match with one of the function graphs, A through F below. I don't see five through ten on here, is that on a different page? Ah, right here is, it is on a different page. So I'm gonna try to see if I can make this where you can see everything. That'll be a good opportunity, let's see if I can bring this in on top. Let's go, bring to front. There we go. We're gonna bring it on up more. Let's see here. I don't know that you're gonna be able to see everything. Why don't you guys try to write down the equations right here, then I'll show you the graphs. So write down these five equations right here, or, uh, five, six equations, five through ten. Write those down on your paper, and then I'll show you the graphs, and I'll let you guys match them, and then I'll show you how and why. Again, this is great practice, uh, for preparation for tomorrow's exam. Once you have them, uh, copied down, either mic up and say I'm done, or, if you can't mic, then just type in there that you're done, and I'll, I'll go over and see that. Everybody got them? Okay, here we go. So coming back.
I'm actually, uh, I didn't say it, but I, no, done.
Okay, thank you. Just copy down the equations only, not the graphs.
Okay, I'm, I don't.
And if you've already got them copied down, you can start matching, you, you see four of the graphs right there. So you can start seeing if any of those four match.
Got it.
Okay, you got it? So let's just look at these.
No, no, wait, no, I was just responding to, my bad.
Okay, while you continue to copy them down, I'm gonna talk to the other students real quick. So everybody, look at these, and let's just look at C, D, E, and F, to see if we can, can you cancel that for me, please? Thank you. To see if we can start getting some, uh, matching going on here. So on C here, you can see that, um, it's going to be a, uh, you, you could look at and say, oh, it's a logarithmic. But it's also going to be a reflective exponential also. Uh, so, and then if we have our one known point, it looks like it's a straight reflection down and, and across, is kinda what it looks like to me. So I'm seeing that if you look, if you were to reflect this one up, right here, it would, sorry, I have a poor drawing there, oops, shoot, don't know what I did, but that's okay. Uh, it's gonna be a, like, oops. I know I can do this, please, don't do that to me. Okay, so it's gonna look like this, as a reflection, before we start. And then, uh, and all we did was a reflection, and it's like this, which is a decreasing. Because it's decreasing, I know that my base is less than one, so I'm gonna have base is less than one. So I come down here and I look at number six. This is gonna match number six, and number six is going to be e. Because my base is one half, okay, which is less than one. I have the negative right out front, which flips it across the x axis right there. And I don't have any shifting going on, so that is e, or number six, rather. Oh, c, I do mean c, thank you, you are exactly right, thank you, I just realized that, thank you so much, c. Um, so then we look at d. D, um, is a reflective, and it's also got a shift on it. So if I'm reflecting, um, I'm going to say that it has a reflection about, like this, so that's going to be an increasing, and then if you can visualize that, it flipped right down, but it also went up one unit. So that's gonna be f right here. I have, uh, it's an in, if you look, this is an increasing function, so two is greater than one, which is increasing. Okay, so you have negative two, the negative tells you that it reflects around, so it flips, okay? So, uh, and then we have a negative one, so if we just started our, at our base, we don't have a horizontal shift at all. There's no shifting to the right or to the left. And our parent function would look like this, going right through the, the one, but if we reflected around, then that becomes at negative one. And then I have a shift, uh, let's see here, if I go down and I flip, hang tight, I'm not liking that. So if I go.
Question.
Yes.
Is this being recorded?
Yes, it is.
Oh.
Is that okay?
Yes, that's perfect.
Okay, so, uh, so yeah, actually, this would be a plus one, because when we do our re-reflection, we put a negative throughout the entire function. So that would actually, our parent function would have, I'm sorry?
Uh, did you resume the recording?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yeah, I did. Uh, I didn't announce that I did, but I did. Uh, so we have our, before the reflection, it would be positive, so that's going to go up one, and then when we reflect down, it goes to here. So we have an increasing function, because it's a two. And, uh, and then we have, this would actually have been a positive prior to the reflection, so we would've gone up to two. Uh, and then we have our reflection flipping over, which would bring us down to the, uh, origin, right there. So that's because the reflection goes throughout the entire function. It's not just in front of the two, it is multiplied through the entire function. So our original function would've looked like this, it would've been f of x is equal to two to the x plus one. And that's what we would've had right here. And then when we do our reflection, we actually, in essence, put that negative all the way through, so it becomes negative two x minus one. And so we take and we start with our parent function, we go up one, from one to two. And we have an increasing function, because it's a positive two. And then the negative, which is applied to both terms, and we flip it around, we end up at the, uh, origin. Are you good with that? Any questions? Okay, so that's d. Uh, e, looks like it's just a positive shift up three units, and it's an increasing exponential, um, which is what we have here. Uh, this is increasing, e is greater than one, and we have a shift positive three units, so we go one, two, three. So this one right here is seven, and that is e. And then, this last one right here is, um, an increasing function. And, it's an, aha, that's good, I like it. Um, so it's a, it's gonna be ten. It's an increasing function, so if we have our original function as this, f of x is equal to, um, e to the x plus one, okay? Uh, so if we go e, oh, nope, negative one, sorry, subtract one, subtract one, on that one. So it's gonna be, parent function is subtract one. Then when we do our reflection across the x axis, we end up with, so with a reflection, it takes this whole thing and multiplies it by negative one, so we get f of x is equal to negative e to the x plus one. And they rewrote it as one minus e to the x, okay? So let's look at the parent function right here. e to the x, e is our base, base is greater than one, therefore it's an increasing function, okay? So we have an increasing function, like that, okay? And then we have a shift down one unit, so our new function actually comes down, and is shifted like that. Then we reflect it, which means we flipped it over, which is how we end up at a negative two. Okay? You have to count and do everything, the reflection always do very last, okay? Do all the other transformations and the reflection last, okay? So do your horizontal and vertical, make sure that you determine whether it's an increasing or decreasing function. Graph your parent function, and then do the, the flipping last. And that's how we end up with f right here, so this is f, and f is ten. Is everybody good with that? I wanna move on to a couple, cuz I'm really close on time here. So I wanna move on to a couple of other things, are we good with that?
Yeah, so good.
Great, let's, let's pull up some of the, let me come in here and grab some other things that are of interest to me. And remember, you have access to everything that I'm doing right here, all of these different files and problems that I'm bringing up right now. I already emailed them out, so you, with the answers, so you can look at those and, um, and practice those on your own. I included the answers, okay, so here's another one, let me just make it larger so I can see it a little bit easier. Okay, so, let's just do a few of these very quickly, okay? So, um, let's do, uh, number nine, let's do number fifteen. Um, let's just do nine and fifteen, cuz I really wanna introduce several other concepts real quick. And you can see that I've got the answers in here, so you can come in and check those at any point in time. So on your own, do number nine and number fifteen very quickly. And I'm gonna quietly solve them over here. And it says, do not use a calculator. Nope, I meant to say fifteen, is what I had said, not thirteen, so we're gonna do fifteen. How did you all do? Who got for the first one, x equals four, and who got, uh, x equals two for the next one?
I mean, I got the first one ready, but I.
Good job.
It's gotta be less than a second, so, shoot.
Good job. So going back over here on this one here, whenever you have a fraction, it's gonna clue you in that you're gonna have to move this to the denominator, okay? Uh, and so, in order, uh, because it's a fraction, your base is gonna be in the denominator. So I immediately moved my base to the denominator, and I knew that, uh, I could rewrite two as two squared, okay? And therefore, x is equal to two. And, okay, looking at, uh, uh, these problems right in here, if you haven't already done these and practiced them. Particularly these, these are excellent preparation for tomorrow's exam. These are excellent preparation for tomorrow's exam. And then... I don't wanna graph those, I wanna find ones to solve. So let me, let me come in here real quick and find, uh, another insert real quick. Oh yeah, I only have about 5 to 10 more minutes, so let me do that real quick. Okay, so this is practicing writing sums and differences. Again, everything that I put out here, you just need to be practicing these supplementary exercises. And remember, with the supplementary exercises, I gave you the solutions, right? Here's the solutions. Not the solutions, the answers, so you can check your work to see if you got it right, okay? So, it says, "Express as, uh, a sum of logs," okay? Um, so... Um, so let's do number 1. I'm just gonna highlight some for you guys to practice, so, and then I'll come through and redo it. Uh, express as a product, this one right here, which means apply the power rule. Um, differences. And then, um... Actually, let's jump down to some of these down here at 23. I'm gonna scoot on down, 'cause those are, up here were pretty basic and pretty easy. I wanna get something a little bit more complex and challenging, like these right here, okay? So let's do 23 and 27, and then 32. So those'll be the ones that we're gonna do right now. Okay, guys, I'm not done with 32, but I'm gonna have to scroll down a bit, so I wanna make sure that I take a moment to review with you guys, uh, 23. So here's the answer to 23. I did it in one swoof, as opposed to multiple steps. Uh, did you all get the right answer?
Yeah.
Yep. What about the ladies? Good job, okay? And then, 27. I do not ever recommend doing it in one swoof, but since I had very limited space, I did. Um, mainly because my students are going to forget to distribute that negative to all the terms, okay? You've got to make sure that there's an equal sign right there. I don't know why I don't have an equal sign. Let me add in an equal sign. So, equals... Okay, so this equals this. So, um, it's gonna be, uh, natural log of 2, and then it's minus each of these terms. So it's minus log, uh, natural log of 3, minus natural log of x cubed. So that 3 comes down out front. So it's minus 3 natural log of x, and then minus natural log of y, right there. Did everybody do okay on that one?
Yes.
Good job, okay? And now, we're gonna look at this last one right here, breaking it all the way out. I hope you all converted it to the 1/3rd to begin with. And so, oh, look at that. I had all that room down here, I didn't realize I could've come right down there and worked. Okay, so, in this case, I'm just gonna bring this right on over here. So, shh, right there. Okay, so the first thing I'm gonna do is I'm gonna say that this is 1/3rd log base c of y cubed z squared divided by x to the fourth. So this is gonna be 1/3rd times, uh, log base c of y cubed z squared minus log base c of x to the fourth. Now, I'm going to break this apart. So this is going to be equal to 1/3rd times log, oops, let me... Times. I'm gonna go ahead and break this apart into addition, and I'm also gonna bring my 3s and my 2s down at one time. So it's 2 log base cy plus, not 3, how about 2? 2 log, this one here should be a 3. Um, yeah, 3. So it would be 3 log cy, so 3 log cy plus 2 log z. And then, minus 4 log cx. And now, I would distribute my 1/3rd all the way through. And when I do that, on the first one here, I'm gonna skip a step, guys. That's gonna disappear. So 1/3rd times 3 goes to 1. So I end up with log base c of y plus, now, again, distributing it, so it's 2/3rs log z minus 4/3rs log c of x. And that would be your final answer. How many people did okay with that one?
Gotta... Got it.
Excellent. Very good. I am sorry, guys, I am absolutely smack out of time. I've got another student at 11 o'clock that I've gotta get prepared for. Um, so I will start rendering this video right now for you guys. Uh, I emailed all these supplementary exercises out the other day. I strongly encourage you to, after you get the review mastered, to come in and find other problems just like the review. So, you know, on the review, you saw it said, "Express in terms of sums and differences." Come in and practice these. And when you look down here, you can see I have the odd numbered 1s, you know, so you can check your work on the odd problems. So all 5 or 6 of the supplementary exercises I sent out have that option, um, where you can go in and check your work. So please do that. I cannot express to you. This is the, this is the exam that just knocks people's grades down. So please study, do problem after problem after problem after problem, so that tomorrow, when you get in, you have the math muscles and confidence to, to just knock that, uh, exam out of the ballpark and hit a home run, okay, guys? So, again, you can text me, I'm working solid from 11 o'clock to 4 o'clock, though, tutoring students, so please, um, uh, know that I'll be a little bit slow getting back until after 4 o'clock this afternoon. So, and I will upload these videos as soon as I can. I'm gonna start rendering it. It'll, it takes twice as long to render as it does to produce. So we've been recording for 2 hours, so it's gonna take about 4 hours to render the, the video. Um, okay, guys, I'll talk to you later. Have a good day, and I'll, uh, uh, do well tomorrow on, on tomorrow's exam for me.